All right, good morning, everyone. This is our mon- monthly, our Monday Commissioner's Status Update that happens weekly. September 14th, 11:01 a.m. I'm calling this meeting to order. In attendance are Commissioners Brooks and Duncan. Chairman Philios is on vacation this week. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We are going to get down to our first item of business with it, which is an executive session for solid waste. Do I have a motion?
I move we go into executive session.
Okay. Can you just read the code?
Sure, I can read the whole code if you want. Executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-206-18. Consider hiring a public officer.
Thank you. Second?
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Aye. That's quite all right. Can you hear me? Yes. Sure, absolutely. You ready?
He's on vacation this week.
Are you ready? Okay. Nancy, you ready?
Okay.
Okay. So, we're about to exit executive session. It's 11:09 a.m. And I move that we make an offer to the employee discussed at eighty-nine, eighty-eight thousand nine hundred two dollars and forty-five cents.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair for town.
Aye. All right. Motion passed. Now, we can go on to item number two, which is the November 3rd, 2020 general election ballot order. And clerk?
You should have been given a copy of your ballot order for the upcoming election. Do you have that?
Yes.
Thank you. For the record, Jim Brandon, clerk. I've never seen an election with as many moving parts as this one. We have presented a ballot order for your approval. We're going to be using some different methods of getting ballots this election, such as print-on-demand, which we have never done before. However, we need ballots to have in the event of any backups needed if printing doesn't work. So, it's a little lower than we might ordinarily expect, but that's what we need. Jennifer and Shelley Amos have to work to get these numbers. Any ballot, unfortunately, that we order that we don't use is just a waste of taxpayer money. So, we try to be very accurate with this. So, are there any questions?
So, how would you like the motion to read? Do you need the amount of ballots or the amount of money?
I think it's...
Just approve the ballot order, Pat?
Just to state that it is a son.
Yeah.
With the absentee mail-out, obviously, it's increasing by the day. So, those numbers were a snapshot on Friday, and we're already over thirty-four thousand, almost to thirty-five thousand over the weekend that we're getting online. So, that number is constantly changing. Our first mail-out is scheduled to go out, the big one, October 2nd. And the Yuakavas, they have to be mailed out by September 18th.
Okay. Wow, which is Friday.
Yeah. But that's a small, very small versus the thirty-five thousand that we'll have to have out October 2nd.
Sure. Okay. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the ballot order for the November 3rd, 2020 general election as submitted by the clerk's office.
A second?
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair for town.
Aye. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, and good luck.
And I will say, thank you for that, and send prayers our ways, too.
Well, people have talked about what's going to happen. And I said, "Don't worry, Clerk Brandon has it covered."
Yeah, thank you for your confidence.
Wish some good help from Jennifer and staff, yeah.
Item number three is State of Idaho Broadband Initiative update. Jody?
Yes. By way of background, I just wanted to remind the board that on the 30th of June 2020, the Board of County Commissioners approved seventeen household broadband applications that were submitted to the Idaho Department of Commerce on behalf of Intermax Networks. On 26 July 2020, the Idaho Department of Commerce sent to Kootenay County a notification of a challenge by Spectrum for fourteen of the seventeen grant applications submitted to the Idaho Department of Commerce. On the 28th of July, the Board of County Commissioners affirmed the applications met the challenge criteria that all applications served underbuilt areas where the less than fifty percent of the homes have broadband, which the Spectrum challenge did not dispute. On the 20th of August 2020, the Idaho Department of Commerce responded to the challenges submitted by Charter Spectrum on July 24th, stating that the Idaho Department of Commerce determined to award Kootenay County the funds to implement the fourteen projects previously challenged by Spectrum. On the 21st of August 2020, Kootenay County received notice of award for all fourteen applications previously challenged. On the 4th of September 2020, Kootenay County received grant applications for all seventeen broadband household projects. On the 4th of September 2020, Kootenay County received a copy of Spectrum's petition for reconsideration to the funding of the fourteen of the seventeen broadband household projects. On the 11th of September 2020, Intermax Networks sent a response to the Idaho Department of Commerce specific to Spectrum's petition for reconsideration of denial of the challenges to funding under the Idaho State Broadband Grant Initiative Program. It was determined by Intermax, Spectrum has not provided substantive evidence to support reconsideration, and Spectrum's request to reduce the amounts awarded is arbitrary. That was sent to Mr. Keely. Okay, so Intermax objected to Spectrum's attempt to seek the reconsideration of decisions that were already made final and binding by the Idaho Department of Commerce. I just wanted to bring you up to date as to where we are. So, tomorrow, you will receive all seventeen applications for your consideration and review and approval.
Okay. And the business meeting?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, I'm going to get our people back on the line here, and then we can start the discussion of the Armory and Airport property split.
Welcome to my one number. If you... The hope... Thank you. You are the only participant in the conference.
All right. Well, we just might... Wait a second, then. All right. So, Jody, are you going to lead us in this discussion, or... Okay. Try to hang out here just a minute to get Melissa and Caitlin back on. This is something you can start, and then... Well, I don't have any other numbers. So, I would expect they'd be on any second. Do you have either of their email addresses? Caitlin Kling with Lake City or...
Both.
Okay. I don't know if maybe you just want to shoot them a quick. We're ready for you. Well, and I said, because we're going to go into executive session, and they said, "Okay, we'll call back at 11:15." So, I have 11:16 on my watch. Okay. Thank you. Here we go. Hi, Caitlin.
I'm there.
Okay. Melissa, is Melissa on? Hopefully, she'll be on quickly. Okay, Jody, go ahead.
Okay, so there were a number of items that we...
I don't know if you can pull that.
Hello?
Yeah, make sure your mic's on as close to your mouth.
Can you hear me?
There you go. Hi, Melissa, is that you?
Yes, Melissa. Yep, I'm back on.
Okay. So, Jody Beazey is starting us off in this conversation. We're ready.
So, I think the first... I think the first topic is the airport parcel located within... Is the airport parcel of 237 acres? I think in particular, we were focused on fifteen acres. Is that located in the ACI?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you hear Jody okay?
She's pretty faint. I can hear her, but real faint.
Speak up, that's all.
Can you hear me better now?
Is that better?
Is that better?
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right. So, the first question we wanted to answer is whether or not the airport was in the ACI. And the reason why that was important was then to be able to then go down and cascade into the requirements of that being in the ACI. So, we had initially, Melissa, if you recall, that we had a conversation around the 4.2 shared parcels, and those two, that parcel was going to have two uses on there. And we had a conversation around what would be the infrastructure requirement for those parcels, and not to take away anything else. I know that Stephen had indicated that there was a total of maybe fifteen acres that he was keenly interested in peeling off of the 237 acres. And so, therefore, the question of infrastructure had come up with the city of Hayden. So, I'll turn that over to you, Melissa, if you wanted to comment on that. I'll give it a pause for a moment.
Right. So, I think we had a question for your attorney, because we were trying to figure out, there was discussion of the county being able to do that pre-split, I think is what it was described as, for the 4.2 acres. And we didn't see, because of the ACI, we saw the way that was described, that it just, it doesn't talk about subdivision, it talks about development. So, we thought that any kind of land use action like this would fall under that category. Has that been worked out yet, or...
I guess my threshold, this is Pat Braden, civil deputy prosecutor, the one who wouldn't give you our position, because I didn't know what our position was going to be yet. But I think the threshold question I would have in directing it at Jody primarily is, is there development planned on this property that we're talking about?
Why, it would be our intent on the public transportation side to be able to build a maintenance facility and a place for the vehicles to be parked. And that was communicated to Melissa and the city of Hayden as to what our intent was.
Okay. Because I, it hadn't been communicated to me.
Okay, I apologize.
And I assume, I know Tiffany's here from OEM, and is there any other development besides renovating the inside of the Army Building? Okay. But certainly, the transit facility would qualify as development under our ACI agreement.
Okay.
So, yes, I believe...
Okay, perfect.
I believe that those standards would apply.
Go ahead.
So, my understanding, Melissa, is that the standards that are in particular conversation, we talked about the sewer, and that was indicated that that would go to the airport for a variety of reasons, but I'll let you confirm that, that we would then have to make sure that the road, that public-private frontage was that requirement from the city of Hayden would be satisfied, and that would be Ramsey Road. And I'll let you confirm that. I think...
Yeah, I'm just curious on that. Would the city prefer Ramsey or Wyoming for that, given that there's eventually going to be a traffic signal there and a widening, at least a part of it?
Okay. So, the way our code is written is that any of the frontage of the road, it doesn't depend on which road you take access off of. So, both would get developed, Wyoming and Ramsey would both get developed. Now, we have a project, and I just got with Public Works this morning, so I'd be informed. We have a project on Ramsey that's coming, at least the road widening is coming south till just north of the pump house on that Armory property. So, that will, at least the road widening, not the sidewalk, the curb goes in, but the sidewalk doesn't extend all the way down. So, there's all sorts of details to hammer out, to put into this agreement. But the rest of the way south, we would, those would be frontage improvements as a part of the subdivision that would occur from where our project ends south to miles, I guess. That's our understanding, anyway. And so, I have some right-of-way. I think we're willing to defer the actual road improvements, because there's not sewer in Ramsey Road yet, and we would sure hate to put a bunch of money into widening a road and then have the sewer line come in and rip it out. So, we would defer those improvements until the sewer got in on Ramsey. But at this point, we would like to see the right-of-way and easement, and utility easement get dedicated. And I would probably have to sit down with your surveyor and show, it's a forty-foot half width for right-of-way, but that doesn't get centered on the section line, because we have constraints that occur on the west side, and then we have constraints that occur on the east side. So, it kind of has to, the road kind of has to wobble between them. And then, we also understand the constraint of the pump house, so we have some options on getting through there.
So, Melissa, if this is county property, and the county's going to continue to use their own property, is it just because we're taking this away from the 237 acres that requires all of this infrastructure to be done?
Right, because it's a subdivision. So, any subdivision that occurs, if you, you know, the roads that you run have infrastructure requirements.
So, I'm going to let David Callahan, our community development director, speak to that.
This is David Callahan.
Okay.
Just for the sake of clarity, I think we end at the same point. The requirements are the requirements, but if we land there from a different angle, in my view, there is no subdivision. This is by definition a subdivision exemption.
Okay.
And so, we take it out of the subdivision realm. But the ACI still requires new development, which there is, to meet the city's standards. So, that would be the rational basis.
Okay. So, if we just did this for the Armory and didn't consider transit...
Then arguably, there's no new requirement.
Okay. So, is transit going to be able to fund the infrastructure?
I would say that that would have to be with the county, because if we go into a joint development like we've talked about, then it shouldn't be the burden of public transportation to meet the county's obligation around a subdivision or development that would go in beyond what we would currently focus on. So, we're willing to look at what we would need to have for our purpose of wanting to have that, but I would have thought that there may have been a desire for the board to consider a joint development project that would benefit the county and therefore offset future costs. And I already checked with the FTA on a joint development, and on a preliminary basis, they agree with the presentation that I made, that the joint development, if so, for example, on the maintenance, that would then be considered a joint development, so we could view it as such.
Can we get a copy of that presentation?
Sure, I'll just get that to you. You bet.
Thank you.
So, I think stepping back, initially, the idea behind this was the 4.2 is going to be a shared parcel. So, if the direction of the board is that they don't want to have a development discussion for the Armory, you still would have to have the discussion whether it would be the public transport, as I understand it, or any other land that you would then look into from the fifteen acres that you would want to potentially do development on. Or if you're not doing development, if you're only looking at public transportation, then I would say that I would want to be exactly the shared parcel that I have talked about with the city of Hayden, and that we've satisfied the infrastructure because of the fact that the Ramsey would be the frontage road, and that in terms of anything that would be specific to meeting the public transportation location, then we would look into.
Okay. So, this is just a lot of stuff up in the air and not really written down for me, and I kind of prefer that. Bill, did you have thoughts or questions on this?
No, I want to take a look at that also.
What I'll do is I'll provide you with the requirements of a joint development that FTA said that would be something that we could look into.
Okay.
And the reason why there's a timeliness on this is because the path to have a place to locate the buses is running short, and the process by which to do what we would like to do is going to take some time, and we need to... Time is of the essence for us in terms of starting to be able to move forward.
Sure. I just want to know what the county's obligation is, because already, we're having to purchase the land from the airport. So, that's already a chunk of change. And so, if it's going to be this sewer and road and all that kind of stuff, then I need to know.
Well, the sewer, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the sewer you've offered up that would be part of the airport, is that true?
The sewer connection is going to need to happen, I don't know how it wants to see that happen, but that could be connected to the airport sewer system as it, it just needs to be trenching and followed by pressure.
Right.
And so, to that end, when speaking...
Right, and we were going to...
So there's all sorts of details to hammer out to put into this agreement. But the rest of the way south, we would, that, those would be frontage improvements as a part of the subdivision that would occur from where our project ends south to Miles, I guess. That's our understanding anyway. And so I have some right-of-way. I think we're, we're willing to defer the actual road improvements because there's not sewer in Ramsey Road yet and we would sure hate to put a bunch of money into widening a road and then have the sewer line come in and rip it out. So we would defer those improvements until the sewer got in on Ramsey. But at this point, we would like to see the right-of-way and easement, utility easement get dedicated. And I would probably have to sit down with your surveyor and show, it's a 40-foot half width for right-of-way, but that doesn't get centered on the section line because we have constraints that occur on the west side and then we have constraints that occur on the east side. So it kind of has to, the road kind of has to wobble between them. And then we also understand the constraint of the pump house, so we have some options on getting through there.
So Melissa, if this is county property and the county's going to continue to use their own property, is it just because we're taking this away from the 237 acres that requires all of this infrastructure to be done?
Right. Because it's a subdivision. So are any subdivisions that occurs, if you, you know, the roads that you front have infrastructure requirements.
So I'm going to let David Callahan, our community development director, speak to that.
This is David Callahan.
Okay.
Just for the sake of clarity, I think we end at the same point. The requirements are the requirements, but if we land there from a different angle, in my view, there is no subdivision. This is by definition a subdivision exemption.
Okay.
And so we take it out of the subdivision realm. But the ACI still requires new development, which there is, to meet the city's standards. So that would be the rational basis.
Okay. So if we just did this for the Armory and didn't consider transit...
And arguably, there's no new requirement.
Okay. So is transit going to be able to fund the infrastructure?
I would say that that would have to be with the county because if we go into a joint development like we've talked about, then it shouldn't be the burden of public transportation to meet the county's obligation around a subdivision or development that would go in beyond what we would currently focus on. So we're willing to look at what we would need to have for our purpose of wanting to have that, but I would have thought that there may have been a desire for the board to consider a joint development project that would benefit the county and therefore offset future costs. And I already checked with the FTA on a joint development and on a preliminary basis, they agree with the presentation that I made that the joint development, if so, for example, on the maintenance, that would then be considered a joint development. So we could view it as such.
Can we get a copy of that presentation?
Sure. I'll just get that to you. You bet.
Thank you.
So I think stepping back initially, the idea behind this was the 4.2 is going to be a shared parcel. So if the direction of the board is that they don't want to have a development discussion for the Armory, you still would have to have the discussion whether it would be the public transport, as I understand it, or any other land that you would then look into from the 15 acres that you would want to potentially do development on. Or if you're not doing development, if you're only looking at public transportation, then I would say that I would want to be exactly the shared parcel that I have talked about with the city of Hayden and that we've satisfied the infrastructure because of the fact that the Ramsey would be the frontage road and that in terms of anything that would be specific to meeting the public transportation location, then we would look into.
Okay. So this is just a lot of stuff up in the air and not really written down for me and I kind of prefer that. Bill, did you have thoughts or questions on this?
No, I want to take a look at that also.
What I'll do is I'll provide you with the requirements of a joint development that FTA said that would be something that we could look into.
Okay.
And the reason why there's a timeliness on this is because the path to have a place to locate the buses is running short and the process by which to do what we would like to do is going to take some time and we need to, time is of the essence for us in terms of starting to be able to move forward.
Sure. I just want to know what the county's obligation is because already we're having to purchase the land from the airport. So that's already a chunk of change. And so if it's going to be this sewer and road and all that kind of stuff, then I need to know.
Well, the sewer, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the sewer you've offered up that would be part of the airport, is that true?
The sewer connection is going to need to happen. I don't know if it wants to see that happen one way or another. But that can be connected to the airport sewer system as it is. It just needs to be trenched and installed.
Right.
And so to that end, when speaking...
Right. And we were going to exempt the sewer in Ramsey Road from this. We were, because we have another avenue to fund that with a developer. And so we, even though that would normally be required, when we write the Declaration of Restricted Covenants Agreement on this property, we will exempt the sewer in Ramsey.
Okay.
So you won't be required to do that.
And then Tiffany, do you know if your grant covers hookup to sewer or is that only inside the building?
Our grant is only for the renovation.
Renovation.
So again, if we were to look at this as a joint venture, we could then be obviously deferring some of the costs that would normally be there if you were to do it without, for each individual having costs that are associated with the improvements or the infrastructure, not the improvements, the infrastructure. So as I understand it, and Melissa, make sure I'm on point here, the requirements for the city of Hayden is that you want us to make sure that the Ramsey Road frontage, that we make a contribution to that improvement. Is that correct?
That is correct, yep.
And then the second thing is that you have easements and therefore right-of-ways that again, you've spoken to, you've spoken to Stephen about and he is understanding that those right-of-ways and easements would be then made available to you. Is that correct, Stephen?
The property we were leasing, the stuff further south, we're going to have another conversation about. That's not part of the lease contract section.
So specific to the 4.2 parcel and specific to Wyoming and then whatever we've talked about to date about Ramsey, is there right-of-ways that the airport has on Wyoming or...
We own Wyoming.
So they own Wyoming. So then in terms of Ramsey, are there right-of-ways or easements that they need to...
Wyoming, we need to do some sort of, what is it, a subsidy or an... Easements which are allowable to be done.
Okay. So again, to reiterate, so for purposes of this 4.2 parcel that we would like to do as a shared, that my understanding from the city of Hayden is that the improvement on Ramsey Road would be a contribution, a contribution by quote unquote, let's say for the sake of this discussion, the FTA funds that would then be specific to the 4.2 parcel. Is that correct? Melissa?
Are you asking me?
Yes, please.
Um, so to me, when we're creating separate lots in here, that was, that's a subdivision. So I think we're getting, you know, some confusion between the city's code and the county's code. My understanding was Stephen further south was going to create leased lots out of those lots to the south. And so I guess at the time of development of those lots, we'd also have the frontage improvement and right-of-way to take care of.
So we're, this is just a really awkward situation. The county's having to purchase county-owned land from the airport because of the FA assurances. So when you're talking about the land south, public parks and waterways and then search and rescue, there's no development going on there. We would only take it out from under the 237 acres. So that, that just remains what it is. So I think we have to have further conversations because to me, there's two issues here. There's getting the land apart from the airport, the 15, is it 15 acres total, Stephen?
The total area kind of packed.
Adding pack.
Everything is 15.
Okay. So 15 acres. So then after that issue is settled, then I think we can go back in and tackle the FTA shared services and all that issue. So is this something, Pat, that you and David can work on? So in my, in front of me, in front of the board, it says, you know, point number one, we, if we're going to split the 15 acres, this is what the city requires. So if we're going to bring in FTA, this is what the city requires? Because this seems very overwhelming.
Well, originally just, right. And just for a point of clarification, initially this conversation started because of the 4.2 acres.
Mm-hmm.
And it was that as a standalone. And then after that conversation, it was brought to my attention that there was an intent for additional acres.
Right.
So our path initially was the 4.2 shared parcel.
So that, that was your path, but actually Stephen's had conversations with the board about the 15 acres since we've been here.
I understand. But what I'm saying is that initially when we were talking about the property, we were specifically talking about 4.2 shared.
But I don't want to do it piecemeal. I don't want to do 4.2 acres this year and then, you know, 11 acres next year and I'd rather it be looked at holistically to find out the best path forward.
Yes.
Because we're not going to have a lot of money to be putting in sewer line if we're purchasing the land already. Does that make sense?
Can I... How far is the sewer line going to run?
It's airport road, so if you're a small location like Park and Waterways, it has maybe 150 feet.
So...
150 yards.
150 yards. 300 feet. So 300 feet is probably going to cost you 150 to 175,000.
Right.
So the airport has stuff that can be, we also have...
There you go.
Get on left on the pipe.
Sure.
There. That'll work.
Okay. So there's just a lot of moving parts here and this is not, this is just a discussion item. It's no action today.
Right.
But I would like to see it a little bit more clarified. Bill, did you have...
No, I think we're certainly no, in no position to make a decision today.
Oh, no. And I, I actually, the goal today was to make sure that all of us were on...
Informational.
Yes, that we're on the same page and that we knew the direction we were going as a unified front and not that that's really was the goal.
And so in my mind, I want to know about the whole 15 acres. And then after we get the whole 15 acres a plan potentially, then take those 4.2 acres and be able to, you know, go ahead with the, if we're able to go ahead with the shared services.
So you're looking for a long-term plan on the 15 acres?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just for clarification, what's long-term? Because if we have to find a different place for our buses, that's really where I'm coming from is that this, if this is not the right answer for us, then we need to find the right answer.
So how, what are you, are you talking months or years? Do you have a year?
No. We're talking less than 12 months.
Okay. So Post Falls Highway Districts has given you an out.
They have, they have asked us to leave, yes. Very nice, by the way, they've been extremely supportive.
Sure.
So don't mistake that they've been really generous.
Sure. What is the date for that?
I will get specifics. I don't know the exact date, but I knew that we had 12 months or less as of this moment.
Okay.
We could still park them temporarily on the Armory lot. Is that, is that correct?
I don't think so, but don't...
Okay.
Do you have a lax security?
Okay. It's a, yeah, it's a fenced area. So, so I think we can do it concurrently. I think we can find, work on this solution and work on a temporary bus solution too. Well, yes, we're working on the permanent one, but I don't think the permanent one's going to be in place before the temporary one runs out. So, okay. Anything else?
Okay. This is Melissa. I was wondering if, if Pat and David and Stephen would be willing to meet with me and, and see if we can hammer some of this stuff out and get a little clarity.
Pat?
Yeah, that's fine, I think, but I, I think to some extent, you know, what, you know, what is required is going to be development-driven. You know, I don't know if there's going to be any more subdivision of land or how it's going to be used in the future. So that's going to be, have to be part of the discussion.
Right. Right. Just to get a clear understanding of what's going on and then we can, then we can draft that, that agreement so that...
Yeah, well, at least, at least as clear as I have it. So like, you know, like Commissioner Duncan said, there are a lot of moving parts here and so...
There are, yes.
That's going to, I think, drive and part wood agreement we might be able to reach.
Okay.
So, but, you know, at least we can...
Okay, I'll reset through that on availability.
Okay. Yep, they'll, they'll wait for your call and set up an appointment. So Stephen, that works for you as well?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much.
Perfect.
All right. Now we're up to item five, pending items, status review. And I looked through it, Bill, and I only saw two things that needed to be updated. If you saw something else, feel free to, to jump in.
The dreaded music.
Yes. So Romer, we are publishing this week with deed restrictions to offer it up for sale. And that sale, we will open bids on September 29th. So that's where that stands. And then the only other thing that I saw was U of I Extension's new home. There is a lease coming for the U of I Research Park and that would be a two-year lease and that should be in our hands for legal to review hopefully today.
And I'll, I'll work on the MOU. I talked to the...
Okay.
I'll work on the MOU and should have something to you by the end of the week.
Okay. Bill, was there anything on your list?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Then we are up to public comment. Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned 11:40 a.m. Thank you so much.